We do get questions, what is this? Is this a city program? And it's not. What we do is we advise those folks to just call that 800 number that's in the brochures that they send out. So that, in a nutshell, that's kind of what that's about. I certainly answer any questions you might have.
When we talk about being a partner, or they're a partner with us, in what regards are they a partner besides covering maintenance? I mean, we don't have a partnership with State Farm covering housing.
Sure.
Insurance, or something like that.
What we do is, the partnership is that then the city gets 10% of whatever they sell. That comes back to the city of Garden City. So in, I don't have all of the numbers, but in 2017, that was $4,300. '18 was 46. 2019 so far has been 51, roughly $5,100. So that'd be where the partnership comes from. And then the homeowner receives a break in the cost because they hire their own contractor. It's not like they bring somebody from out of town.
Do you know what the cost of the average claim is, or Mike at all? Or did they send you that information?
I don't know the average cost.
$158,000 divided by 279.
Yeah, there you go.
Sorry, I'm not allowed to use my phone. Otherwise, well, no, I could get very distracted.
We don't, we don't, we don't push one way or the other. If somebody wants to buy it, they're more than welcome to. There are other firms you can buy that from that's not affiliated with the city. And you can do that on your own as well.
Yeah, it was confusing because, I mean, you're having someone with the logo and then, you know, not really understanding how that partnership worked.
Yeah, under the logo, it says, "A Program Partner."
Yeah.
But it is confusing.
I think we, we've had some other warranty programs, I think.
I'm not sure that they use our name, but it seemed like there was another one.
Yeah, there are other companies that offer the same service that's not affiliated with us or the National League of Cities. That's how we actually got into it in the first place, was the National League of Cities recognizes them as a reputable firm. And the, some of the other places, Dog City, Hillsboro, Prairie Ridge, Ottawa, Derby, Hutch, several places in Kansas use the same company. But the other ones, I can tell you that I got involved in two cases where they weren't, the process wasn't being followed the way that particular company said, but we got it resolved for them, okay? But it wasn't this company. Anyway, that's kind of the scoop on that.
Okay. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
You'll see that some meetings, under Meetings of Note, that are coming up. I think you've probably RSVP'd for the Christmas dinner by now. I think that's the only thing on there that requires a, an RSVP. So with that, we're ready for Item 9A. It's the Appropriation Ordinance. If approved, it would be 2495-2019.
I move that we approve Appropriation Ordinance Number 2495-2019A.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Appropriations Ordinance 2495-2019A. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve lease purchase financing for five police department vehicles. If approved, it would be Resolution Number 2831-2019. The police department had ordered seven police vehicles for 2020. These were approved in the 2019 budget. Delivery of all seven vehicles has not yet happened, and department budgeted lease payment to happen this year. Last week, one vehicle arrived, and there's a second one soon to follow. It was the advice of the Service and Finance Department to outright buy these two vehicles with the budgeted amount for the first lease purchase payment on seven, and then change this lease purchase arrangement to cover the other five vehicles. So that's, again, the budgeted amount for the lease purchase payments in the 2020 budget come out of the general fund, 001-121216100 in 2019. That same line item will be used to purchase the two vehicles outright. Do you have any questions? If not, the, again, the appropriate resolution number would be 2831-2019.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2831-2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2831-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution setting the public hearing on December 17, 2019, at 1:30 PM for the creation of a community improvement district for NCAN Partners LLC for the remaining pad site number one, as shown in Exhibit D. If approved, this would be Resolution Number 2832-2019. Carol?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Last commission meeting, this governing body did approve the petition for this, for the CID district proposal. The location of this is over Children Crossing. It's the last parcel, which is just on the other side of the Five Below. This is the location. And what we are asking today is to set the time and date for a public hearing to move forward with the establishment of this district. And that will be, as Matt has mentioned, on the next, or December 17, at 1:30. And this is to move forward. Just kind of a summary of what happened in the last meeting, the estimated cost, because you will need to approve that, not today, but at the public hearing. If you choose to approve the ordinance to establish this district, you will be approving the estimated cost of 2.625 million with a sales tax at 1% and financing as pay-as-you-go, meaning that the developer or contractor will be paying upfront for the costs and then being reimbursed with a sales tax rebate on that. So your options today are to adopt this resolution. As I mentioned, this is just to establish the state in time for the public hearing, or you can defer this action to a later date or deny this request. I do, staff does recommend approval, and I do want to point out the next steps, which will be, the, the next meeting will be December 17. We will do noticing before that meeting, and then that's when you would be adopting ordinance to establish the CID district.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2832-2019.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2832-2019, setting up a community improvement district hearing on December 17, 2019, 1:30. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried.
We're asked to remove Item 10C from the, from the agenda. It was, we caught an error in the, the letters of the notice material, or it was drawn to, it came to our attention, I guess. And so, we think the best result is to remove that one from the agenda and restart that process. So that makes 10D the next item. This is the governing body being asked to remove a motor vehicle nuisance at 806 Summit Street. If approved, it would be Resolution Number 2833-2019. Carol?
Okay. All right, the next two resolutions have to do with motor vehicle nuisance. I'm just going to go over both of them right now, and then you can make two different motions on those. The first one is at 806 Summit Street, a blue Chrysler. This is an inoperable or unregistered vehicle that is in, on the property. We have gone through the proper procedure to notify the resident. We did not hear anything back from the resident, so we're proceeding ahead with this resolution. The second one is at 802 Summit Street, a white Pacifica, same, same reasoning, an inoperable or unregistered vehicle. And we, on this case, have also gone through the, the proper procedure to notify the owners of these vehicles. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
I'll take the first one for 2833, right?
Yes.
Is there a motion for that?
I move that we approve Resolution 2833-2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2833-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That brings us to Item E. If approved, it would be Resolution 2834-2019.
She already showed it.
Yeah, again, this is the white Pacifica at 802 Summit Street.
You entertain a motion for that resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2834-2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2834-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. No business?
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the 2019 budget amendments that are necessary to reflect actual 2019 expenditures. During October of each year, city staff compares actual and estimated expenditures to the authorized budget. Due to changes in programs, cash carryover, and additional revenues, there is a need to amend the authorized budget. Proposed are the following funds to amend and the justification. In the HIDA grant, this is adjusted, this is adjustment being made for expenses related to salary and benefits. In the Recreation Commission budget, this is an adjustment because tax receipts exceeded the budgeted amounts. In the Special Parks and Recreation Fund, this is to reflect the city's participation in a playground grant. In the Community Development Fund, this is an adjustment based on an emergency solutions grant that was higher than anticipated. In the Project Development Fund, justification for these expenditures was the initiation of the Starbond project. That was, that was sort of the holding place for the money that had been diverted from the general fund to sort of be in waiting for the Starbond to start. In the Golf Course Building Fund, this utilized cash carryover for the master plan that was presented to you earlier in the year. So your choices are to amend the budgets, as shown in the attached Notice of Budget Hearing, or do not amend, which, given that these expenditures have occurred, would be a, would be a state budget violation. So therefore, our recommendation is to amend the budget. And, and as a result, we would publish this Notice of Budget Hearing. That budget hearing would occur on December 3 at 1:30. However, is that just the date and time that we scheduled a public hearing? That was a different, that was a 17?
Right.
Okay, all right, so that time's still good? Yeah, so our recommendation is to amend the budgets, as shown in the Notice of Budget Hearing.
I move that we amend the budgets, as shown in, on the Notice of Budget Hearing.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we amend the 2019 budget expenditures. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Downtown Visioning to increase the capacity of the Incentive Without Walls program. Sheila, or Carol?
Good afternoon again. Okay, so the Downtown Development Fund was created in 2015, and the purpose of it is to offset the expenses associated with the development and revitalization of the downtown district. And it is to encourage the inhabitation of vacant properties of downtown. This, this Downtown Development Fund is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive and downtown master plans. When it originally began in 2015, there was, the fund was, was funded 250,000. That fund was increased by 250,000 in 2016 and 2017 for 27, for 27, 18 and 2019, I'm getting tongue tied here. The fund was, the remaining balance was just carried over. So the fund hasn't had a new deposit into it since 2017. The remaining balance today is at 29,458. And the Downtown Vision, that their request today is to use, request these funds, the remaining balance of 29,458, to fund the IWW program, which, which is the Incentive Without Walls program. And there, there should have been a letter in your packet from Downtown Vision explaining this program and how it works in the community. It's basically a loan program for anyone that wants to start up a business, or increase their business, or anything associated with their business in the downtown. That Downtown Vision uses those, it's like a revolving fund that people get their loans, they pay them off, puts it back in the fund, and then it just keeps going. This fund has been depleted three times already this year, so it's a very popular loan program. And so that is why the, the members of the Downtown Vision are requesting for this Downtown Development Fund to be able to increase that amount, so they can have more loans going out, bear amounts, without running out.
Do they charge interest?
That's a good question. I can have Sheila answer that on that, on that one.
It is a 0% loan program, which is one of the things that makes it attractive. So we currently have nine active loans in the program, and as she said, the, the fund has been depleted three times in the last 12 months. It's been very, very popular. And kind of the trend that we've seen is businesses that are looking for those smaller amounts, like 3,000 to 15,000, they seem to be more attracted to the IWW fund. Those that are looking for funds that are in excess of 20,000 are looking usually at the Downtown Development Funds or the e-commerce type programs that are available. So we're just trying to stay on top of the momentum that's going. We, we did not accept applications from the last three that made inquiries, because we wanted to make sure, before we had them jump through all the hoops to fill out all the paperwork and financials, that, you know, we did or we didn't have money. But we do have three businesses that are currently interested in the loan funds.
So Sheila, how is the success with the payback? Are the, you said you have nine active loans? Are they currently all paying back the loans? And then, so that, that fund continues to replenish itself?
Correct. So in the history of the entire program, there has been zero defaults on any of the loans in the program. There was one occasion way back where a business that had a loan did end up going out of business and leaving. They did not default on that loan. They continued making those payments. That loan was paid off this calendar year.
That's impressive.
So about as soon as we get one paid off, another one seems to come on. So we've actually had four that have paid off their loans in 2019, and then almost immediately we had four more come back on, so.
I make a motion, we approve the request for the Downtown Vision incorporated in the amount of 29,458.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve to transfer the $29,458 amount to Downtown Is there any other discussion?
Did you want to say something in addition?
Well, I did, I did want to point out that we did receive an application this morning for another request for the Downtown Development Fund. I just wanted to make you aware, in the past, when we've had more than one applicant, it's, it's always kind of been priority, a first come, first served. But I did want to make you aware of that. This applicant, I have been speaking with them the past month, but they hadn't submitted anything until this morning. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay. All right. Well, maybe they can apply through Downtown Vision. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a rebate program available to residential customers within the city of Garden City for the purchase and installation of WaterSense certified irrigation controllers. Fred?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a project we've been working on for some time. Seasonally, the city of Garden City water system sees a large increase in water usage starting in April. It does not typically reduce until the end of October each year. And what we typically see is, is a doubling of demand for water in the irrigation months as compared to our winter months. The Environmental Protection Agency has studied water consumption nationwide and has identified issues regarding water use that can help communities like our own save water. In our area, we have water resource with limited renewable potential that's entirely reliant on groundwater, and we're drawing out of that aquifer at a rate that's greater than what a recharge is. The EPA noted in their research that homes with clock, with clock timer controlled irrigation systems use about 50% more water than homes without automatic irrigation systems. Clock timer systems may waste even more water if the timer is programmed incorrectly, if we have damaged sprinkler heads, or sprinkler heads that aren't actually hitting the grass that they're trying to water. To address some of these shortcomings with clock timer irrigation systems, the EPA developed a certification program via their WaterSense certification standards. The traditional irrigation controllers operate on a clock system. Customer sets that controller to perform an irrigation cycle, and then they determine how many times to repeat the cycle during a week. Unless the user operates the controller manually, the controller will continue to repeat the program cycle until the controller is physically shut off or reprogrammed. So what the WaterSense program tries to do is develop a controller that reacts to weather conditions throughout the irrigation season and adjusts automatically for water usage. Controllers use local weather conditions and landscape information to tailor the watering schedules to the actual conditions on site. WaterSense labeled controllers allow water, watering schedules to match plant water needs. And if weather conditions permit, the controller will skip an entire watering day or zone that doesn't have vegetation that needs as much water as, as other areas, and it does that automatically. WaterSense controller may accomplish this in several ways. It can use weather monitoring devices that are directly attached to the controller, or it can use readily available weather data that it's available over the internet. Typical smart controllers connect to the internet via Wi-Fi signal in the home and monitor temperature, relative humidity, and wind speed and rainfall conditions, then uses this data to develop an evapotranspiration calculation. This is basically the same kind of equipment we've been using in our parks. We've noted some significant savings from those systems, so this is a, more of a consumer version of the same technology. Controllers that meet the WaterSense certification are labeled with the WaterSense seal on the packaged, packaging, and the EPA also keeps a list of certified controllers on their website. So when we were looking at this project, we did some estimates of what the water savings would be. There's, in the city right now, there's 6,885 residential customers. We estimate about 4,734 meters are for single-family residences. And in 2018, we estimated that single-family residences consumed over 525 million gallons of water for irrigation. There's a table attached to this memo that shows a breakdown of residential water users, and we broke down the users into three different tiers to kind of give a little bit of a picture of what the whole, the whole residential picture is in the community. Monthly usage assumes some outdoor water uses for seven months of the year. And then we took those amounts and determined the impact of a 15% reduction in water usage as a result of using WaterSense labeled controller. And we get that 15% amount from the data the EPA developed on these controllers. And so keep in mind that this is data that's gathered nationwide and in different climates around the country. So that, that usage reduction is probably a little bit on the conservative side, based on what our own climate is here. We then used the residential water consumption data in the city to make an assumption as to the water savings based on the, on the water use intensity of each tier, and then developed a payoff using an average controller cost of $162, which is calculated by comparing the readily available controllers that were available for purchase in our area. So that chart just basically shows the top, middle, and bottom third of users in the city, our estimate of how many gallons on average each of those tiers would use, how much would be used for irrigation per month, and then how many gallons annually and monthly could be saved with a 15% reduction. And then we're kind of showing what an assumed annual savings would be on their utility bills, and then what their return on investment would be for the controller. So for the top users, the return on investment is a lot quicker, and obviously for, for the lower bottom third of users, it's longer. One of the things that we've been studying when we've been talking about water usage by residential customers and some of the reporting that we've been doing for customers is that it's not necessarily the largest lawns that are, that play a role in overuse of water. And so that's why we felt like it was important to show some of the smaller customers that maybe aren't using large numbers of gallons, but they may be using a large number of gallons per square foot that they're irrigating, and that, that can add up for the city. I have information in there, again, where more information about the WaterSense labeled controllers can be found. And this, this study on their specifications was developed by the EPA in 2011 and is available from the EPA website. Again, we looked at local outlets to kind of determine what an average cost of controllers would be. The average price, as I mentioned before, was $162, and the range of those prices was from $259 for a 16-zone smart controller to just under $60 for a four-station smart controller. Most controllers were in the $100 to $200 price range and are typically set up to control eight zones of irrigation. So the zone is how many sprinkler heads that system will operate at one time. Terms of recommending the rebate amount, we use the EPA website, which also has information about partner communities that offer weather-based irrigation controller rebates. And nationwide, we found generally that rebates ranged from $50 to $200 per controller. Staff assumes that the higher the rebate, the more likely customers are to adopt the new technology. However, exceeding $150 per rebate would not be reasonable based on the costs we've observed here in the market. In terms of the rebate, we're proposing a one-time rebate for weather-based irrigation controllers. This approach mirrors what most other communities are offering in similar-style rebate programs. And after the initial rebate, our hope is that customers would realize savings from the installation of the controller and continue to choose convenience of a smart controller in the future when it's time to purchase a replacement. I have an entire menu of rules that we're proposing for the program, and I, if you have any questions on that, I won't belabor that issue, but we base these, again, on what other communities are doing, and try to ensure that the rebate program is used appropriately. In terms of implementing the program, we're working to develop a workflow within our department to clear applications. We've visited with Service and Finance and the, and Melinda to discuss how we would handle the application process. And then we will have training for our own staff to administer the rebate. And then we will have training for our own staff to administer the rebate program to assist customers during the application process and work with them in completing the rebate process. And then our water quality specialist will be responsible to confirm proper installation of equipment and make a site visit to make sure that that equipment's installed and actually being used by the customer. We also intend to identify top-tier residential irrigators using our data that will be available shortly after the New Year in order to send targeted messages to those customers informing them about the program. And then what I'm doing today, presenting this rebate program to the governing body. We're working with communications right now to develop a social media campaign, some messages that can be included in billing statements and on our public information channel. And then distributing information to applicants, provide assistance to customers in setting up their controllers, and make information available on the social media and city website. Assistance will be limited to helping customers know their landscapes, soil types, and plant materials to configure an irrigation program. But our staff is not going to be responsible for installing or providing technical assistance with this equipment after it goes in. So the customer is going to have to be responsible to work with someone that's competent to help them with the equipment. So the alternatives we present is to approve the rebate program for WaterSense certified irrigation controllers as to be implemented in year 2020. Total rebates awarded during calendar year 2020 shall not exceed fifteen thousand dollars with a maximum rebate of a hundred and fifty dollars per household. Option two is request staff change or amend the proposed program and present requested changes for approval at a future governing body meeting. Or three, to reject the program as presented and direct staff to find an alternate solution. We recommend alternative one and would note that the project was budgeted in the 2020 city budget for fifteen thousand dollars, and I have the GL code listed there for your information.
What, did they go to the water department? Is that where you, where do people go to get this rebate?
So we would have, we would have the rebate information available on the city website. And then we would work, we can provide it from the water department. We could send that information to a customer when they inquire, or they could obtain that information from Service and Finance. We'll leave forms kind of in our public document area, Service and Finance as well.
Yeah, I appreciate the innovation and the creativity and also working with all the data, knowing that was best for our city. So with that, I want to approve the rebate program for WaterSense certified irrigation controllers as presented to be implemented during calendar year 2020.
Make a second to that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the water rebate, WaterSense certification irrigation controllers, whatever. For a hundred and fifty dollars per household, starting January one, two thousand, twenty twenty. Any further discussion? Okay, no? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hey Fred, I would like to, sorry.
Motion carried.
I was wondering about the, you know, I know that there's been a lot of new developments that are going to be happening in 2020 and beyond. And I'm just curious about our water needs and basically our water infrastructure. And I would be interested in how that's going to be looking, you know, as far as, I mean, is that going to take new water towers? Is it going to, I know there's going to be a lot of piping and those kind of things, but I'm curious about that water infrastructure. And you don't have to answer it today, but I, it's been something I've been meaning to ask. And I, since you were here, I totally forgot about it until now, so.
Well, we've certainly been discussing that internally. And we were working with our engineers. One of the things we'll be looking at is updating our water system master plan to account for the development changes that have occurred. I think generally, we found from the last master plan, when that was completed in, I think it was approved in early 2016, if I remember correctly. You know, they set some targets for where they thought the city was going to be based off the trajectory of development that they were observing at that time. And, you know, the good news is we have stayed under those targets. But, you know, as we have, we have more and more projects going on. So we're continuing to look at that. And, you know, we're always considering what we're going to be doing for infrastructure improvements and water resources in the future. So we have, we have a number of things, water rights that are available to the city that we haven't yet developed. And so updating that plan will help us coordinate all those strategies that we, or all those tools that we have available to us and help us figure out how to implement bringing new resources online. Also continuing to have discussions about conserving water and saving water.
Thank you.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a distribution of community grant funds as recommended by the Community Health Advisory Board. Jennifer?
Mayor and Commissioners, I am the staff liaison for the Community Health Advisory Board, which you all tasked newly last year with the duty of reviewing and awarding or denying community grant funds. So in the 2019 cycle, which closed towards the end of March in 2019, the Community Health Advisory Board awarded, awarded a portion of the thirty thousand five hundred dollars in total community grant funds. There was six thousand five hundred dollars left. And they determined at the time that they were going to leave that for the remainder of the year. And at the end of the year, if they hadn't had any other submissions, they were going to roll that over into 2020 and increase the amount that they had available for 2020 applicants. Because they didn't feel like the grants that they received during the 2019 cycle warranted any more funds than what they allotted. So approximately, I guess it was three, maybe three weeks ago, Community Daycare reached out to see if there were any remaining grants available with the city. We checked and realized that there was the remaining sixty-five hundred dollars and told them that they could come, they could submit their application and come before the Community Health Advisory Board at their last meeting, which they did, which was last Tuesday. And they presented their application, which is to cover a replacement of a hot water heater, which they had been out, out, hadn't had a hot water heater since November first. And so they have since got that fixed. And here today is the executive director of the daycare, their accountant, and then also their president and their treasurer to answer any questions that you guys have. It was a fairly lengthy discussion. I believe the Community Health Advisory Board did discuss this for probably close to forty minutes during their meeting and asked a series of questions. And so if you are curious about any of those, or you have any questions about those, or you have questions about the vote, I'm happy to answer any of those. But if you have questions about the daycare, or you have questions about those, then I would have you ask them.
I had a question.
Yes.
Two of the bids were for fifty gallon water heaters. One was for a bigger unit. What, what kind of?
So I can tell you a little bit about that. The daycare had a seventy-four gallon hot water heater, which was what was originally there. And they weren't sure if that was something they needed because the two things that they do is prepare mills and restrooms and sinks and stuff like that. And so two of the bids you're correct are for fifty gallon water tanks, but they're different fifty gallon water tanks. One is like a regular residential fifty gallon, and the other one is for a commercial combustible.
Fast recovery.
Thank you, fast recovery. Hot water that would basically allow them to go with a smaller unit, but would allow them to still meet their water needs at a lower cost than the two bids that were obviously much higher than the ones that could do a smaller unit.
Okay, that answers that.
Okay. Questions for me or questions for them?
I make a motion, we approve the Community Health Advisory Board's recommendation to award four thousand and community grant funds to Community Daycare Center as part of the 2019 cycle.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the four thousand dollar amount for a water heater for the Community Daycare Center. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks for taking care of the kids. It's awesome, so.
I'll just real quickly say thank you all for your time and consideration this afternoon. We greatly appreciate it. And as an emergency need, we appreciate you being available for a resource that we can contact for help when we need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the at-large representative for the planning commission. Carol?
Yes, as you know, the planning commission is a nine-member board. We do have four representatives from Garden City, three from Finney County, one from Holcombe, and one at-large member. The at-large member representative was Jim Howard. He actually was residing in the city. He did resign from the board this year, and we are looking to replace this member. The Finney County Commission has approved or recommended for approval for Mark Giggit, or Jiggit? Sorry. I always do that to his name. To be, to replace Jim as the at-large member. This member has to be approved by Finney County, Garden City, and Holcombe. Finney County, as I said, has approved, just looking for approval here. We do, and just a word of note, we will have another opening in the Garden City members. In next month, we will present that. We have a term expiring here at the end of this year, so. You can vote either in Mark Jiggit, or you can wait for another option.
Okay, anybody?
I move that we approve Mark Jiggit to be appointed as the at-large member for the planning commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Mark Jiggit for the at-large member of the planning commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item 12F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a proposal for the lease of the warehouse building located at Garden City Regional Airport. Rochelle?
Good afternoon. The airport had an opportunity to have a approximately twenty thousand square foot warehouse come available. So our best option was to release a request for proposal, looking for a request for a proposal because we didn't know exactly what would come in, rather than doing an RF, a request for bids. So the proposal, you can look at kind of anything on the proposal and don't have to be constrained by bid prices. So we released this and publicly advertised it in October. We had a lot of interest coming about this, but ultimately, we ended up with two great proposals. One from the Kansas Highway Patrol to utilize the facility for equipment for Troop E as well as emergency equipment and vehicles. Their proposed rent is a thousand a month with a two-year term with the option to renew for another one-year additional term. We also had Scott Auction propose to operate the auction business out of the warehouse and conduct storage of equipment and operate auctions out of it. The proposed rent was twenty-one hundred per month with a five-year term option to review three to five years, or renew an additional three- to five-year term. The advisory board looked at this on November 12th and had a lot of discussion on it. Both proposals are definitely different, but both proposals do have benefits to the airport and the community. So they were unable to provide a recommendation to the governing body for a selection of the proposal. So we bring this in front of you today for discussion. Captain Moser with the Kansas Highway Patrol is here today, as well as Kent Scott with Scott Auction Center is here. So I would like to ask, we'll start alphabetically with the Kansas Highway Patrol Captain Moser to come up, tell you a little bit about his proposal, and then once he's done, we'll have Mr. Scott come up.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
I'm Randy Moser. I'm the commander for the Kansas Highway Patrol in southwest Kansas, which encompasses twenty-four counties. The headquarters being located here in Garden City. Approximately fifteen years ago, we developed and built a new building with K Dot Complex on East Fulton. However, none of us could foresee the future, as I wish all governing boards could. We built our building too small. We were not able to anticipate the amount of equipment that we needed to store. Fortunately, the Highway Patrol has been able to acquire some very expensive and very unique equipment for public safety and law enforcement. Some of the things that we are requesting or that we don't have the storage currently for has approximate value of two and a half million dollars. And this is equipment that's badly needed in southwest Kansas. For example, we have an armored personnel carrier, Bearcat, which Garden City Police Department also has. We've utilized that on several occasions here in Garden City and Finney County. We also have a bomb truck, which includes a lot of equipment, X-ray machines, stuff for protecting bombs. We use our bomb detection K-9 on a regular basis at the airport, and we use them all the time out there. We also have a bomb disposal trailer, which if we should come upon a device, which we do unfortunately, we can place the item in that container with one of our robots and move it to a safe place to dispose. We also propose to store our emergency services equipment. We have an emergency services unit, more commonly known as SWAT, that works closely with all local law enforcement. And we have a lot of equipment that goes with that riot equipment, different chemical agents that we may have to deploy, and so on. We have a seatbelt convencer, which is a trailer that we take everywhere around to schools, different places, and let them experience what it is to have a five-mile collision wearing a seatbelt. And it just helps demonstrate that. We also have a rollover machine, which demonstrates what happens in the event of a rollover. We also have a child restraint trailer, where we go to different events and install child seats for people free of charge and show them how to properly install it. And we also have a command trailer in the event of a major event. Heaven forbid another Greensburg or fire at one of our beefpacking plants like we had, where we can utilize that and we can bring in a bunch of people, a bunch of different communications, and we can all interact together. So we've got a lot of equipment. Right now, we currently store them at different locations. The airport does allow us to keep a small area where we've been able to keep one truck out there for a certain amount of time. But we haven't been able to keep all of our equipment out there. As you can just imagine, the cost of our equipment, it's important that we have it stored in proper conditions. I've inspected the building. I've had my ESU and bomb people inspect the building. It would be ideal for us. It would also give the community some benefits. It would put troopers out at the airport a lot more. We spend time out there anyhow, don't get me wrong. None of this go, none of the services we provide go away if we don't get this building, but it puts us closer. It also gives some security. I've talked to Chief Utes, I've talked to Sheriff Baskew, and the way we work together in southwest Kansas is so much different than any area. We have a completely unified law enforcement presence in southwest Kansas.
Would you need all of that building?
For security reasons, yes. Because one of, as part of my proposal, we would have to put an alarm system in it and have alarms. We are here storing very expensive equipment out there. And yes, we would have to have the whole building. Whether we would utilize it all at one time, probably not. That's a very big building. Buildings are hard to come by in Garden City, especially buildings with access to big vehicles. If you're looking at it as a financial standpoint, there's no way that we can compete with Mr. Scott and his proposal. It's far and away more lucrative than ours. If you're looking at it at a public safety standpoint and the benefits of what it may do for the city, then I think we should get some consideration from this government, governing board. Mr. Scott is a very reputable company. They've been in southwest Kansas all their time. I'm a personal hometown boy. I've been here almost all my life, when the Highway Patrol put me in other places. But we have some needs that we cannot meet right now. Our response time for, at the airport, would be greatly reduced if we had our equipment there. Right now, I've got different vehicles at different locations, just temporarily. And it would just, and we respond to, even though the city property is an airport city property, the Highway Patrol responds to any aircraft. By law, we're required to work any aircraft accidents. But we also respond, mostly our job is to go and limit access from the highway. But we also respond, mostly our job is to go and limit access from the highway. My bomb guys, they're out there doing bomb sweeps quite frequently. In fact, he was out there two days ago, I believe. But I would just ask that this board give us the consideration and look at the proposal. The state's gonna pay you. You know we're not gonna get, you're gonna get paid your lease money. I'm sure Mr. Scott will, too. But we're reputable. We want to protect the area, the people in southwest Kansas the best that we can, and this would help us to accomplish our goal. You have any questions?
Is that the only building that's vacant? What about that other building to the south?
So the warehouse, Matt, if you could turn to the RFP actual document. So the city only owns three of those buildings, so the warehouse that's identified here. We own the scale house, which we also did an RFP on, and no responses for that. And then the building to the very south is labeled Building 71. That is also the city property currently. Right now, it's really rough storage. The building is in dire need of some major improvements, so at this point, it's not rentable. All the other buildings north of the warehouse are not owned by the city. However, the city does have a land lease with the tenants on those properties.
So this is the building that it was, ran it out to the guy with the ear tags?
Correct, yes.
Oh, Vet Tech.
Pro-Tech?
Vet Tech.
Vet Tech.
Okay.
Okay.
You guys don't have any more questions for Captain Moser? We thank you, and then we'll bring Mr. Scott.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
What a proposal there. The thing I'm looking at is, I'm having to move, the rest of those buildings out there have been sold, is what the landlord is telling me. He's selling those. There's gonna be some kind of other big operation go in there. And the guy's taking over the entire property, all of the buildings that are not owned by the city. So I've been located there for the last five years. I would like to stay there for another five to 10 years. I've already leased, and have leased for, I think, 15 years, something like that, the seven to 10 acres north of those buildings from the city. And I have my annual big auction there and create a lot of income for the city, not only from myself and from the taxes I collect, but from the people that come to Garden City to stay in motels and buy gas and shop while they're here going to those auctions. We do a half a dozen auctions a year out there of repo vehicles for some of the local lending companies. And again, that creates a lot of income and a lot of sales tax collected by us for that, for those sales. And that location, if I don't, can't stay at that location, then those sales would have to go somewhere else, if I can find another location. I need a large building that size. I've got a lot of equipment to store, several forklifts and trucks and camper vehicles and things like that, and mobile offices. And, you know, that's why I've offered so much money to rent this building, is because I want to stay there. This rent that I've offered is over twice what I'm paying for the building I'm in now. This is a nicer building, a little better, it's got a little water to it, got a little heavier electricity. And so that's one of the reasons I'm willing to give that money. I want you to consider that I'm offering a five-year lease with a five-year, three-to-five-year extension, which would amount to somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 some thousand more to the city. The Highway Patrol's also, I was told at the last meeting at the Airport Board, that Highway Patrol's going to build the new building within the next few years at the current Highway Patrol location for the purpose that they're renting this building. So they would be moving out in three to four years. And I won't be a player in three to four years. I won't be here. I won't be here for that building. I'll have something else going on by then, or something like that. So for the longevity of the city, the income of the city, I hate to see my tax dollars going to put me out of business so that somebody else can rent the building with state money, you know, tax dollars. That's where I'm at on the position on that, you know.
Have you looked at this other building that she says is not rentable? Is it, I mean, is it that bad?
It is.
Yeah. I've been around it, it's bad.
It's bad?
It's rusted out all the way around the bottom half of the building. I mean, a cat or a dog can go right through that building so fast it isn't funny. The overhead doors are shot. They would all have to be replaced, basically, all of the side tin on that building. If the structural steel is good enough inside, all of the side tin would have to be replaced, and the overhead doors would have to be replaced. And I don't believe there's any water or bathrooms in that building, is there? I've never been in it, or haven't been for years.
But it's in very bad condition. It would all need to be redone.
It would have to be totally redone, and it wouldn't be big enough for me, for the equipment that I've got now. You know, I might be able to make it work, but I wouldn't, it wouldn't be big enough. And again, we're getting more and more distance away from the vacant land where I conduct the auctions at.
So are you currently leasing the building?
Currently leasing the far north building, that's the same size as this building, or virtually the same size as this building. But they're, they've told us that probably around January 1st. They haven't given me an official notice, but sometime in the next three months, they're gonna want us out of there.
So you're not leasing it from the city, then?
No, I'm leasing it from the owner of the building.
The owner, okay.
He owns the buildings, he leases the land from the city, and then I leased that from him. He had two of those buildings leased to an alfalfa hay company. They're having to move out. He had one building leased to an oilfield supply company. They're gonna have to move. You know, everybody's, for the type of operation he's wanted to put in.
Okay.
Any bells maker?
Any other questions?
I think, you know, I had three questions you got for me, but that's where I'm at. I really need the building.
Well, this is tough.
That is a tough situation.
I, you know, from a business standpoint, you know, you want to get as much out of it as you can. I understand the Highway Patrol situation.
Well, I appreciate that Mr. Scott's auction brings, I mean, lots of dollars in.
Sales tax.
Yeah, sales tax, and also, I mean, it's been something that's well-known for years.
And he's been, yeah, he's been here for a long, how many years, Scott?
Started the business in '56, I've been the owner since '90.
'90.
This was my dad's in '77. But I've been at it 45 years.
Yeah. What, any comments from commissioners or questions?
Well, I appreciate, I mean, that the Highway Patrol wants a building to seral, and the equipment certainly vital for, I mean, southwest Kansas. The hard part is, again, that there's a $50,000 difference, I mean, and that's over five years.
Well, five-year lease, yeah.
Right, a five-year lease, so.
There's $36,000 the first three years, and then it's $24,000 plus for the other two years. There are many times ago. For the first five, it's amounts to about $50,000.
So I'm curious, are you planning on building a building? Is that, is that in?
You wanna come up?
We have people watching and listening, so it's easier when you come to the mic.
Are you planning on building a building? Is that correct?
We're trying to be, build a building. KDOT is trying to work on acquisition of building property adjacent to ours, Jamison's property. I don't know if you're aware of that.
The south?
Yeah. It's the three houses that are between the old complex and the new complex. And at least one of them has come up. It looks like KDOT will get that property, and as part of that, we will build a building. But we're looking at two to three years. That's, that's why the lease proposal was structured the way that we did it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the proposal from Scott Auction Center for the lease of the warehouse building located at Garden City Regional Airport.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Scott Auction lease. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Item 12G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the installation of stop signs at the intersection of Second Street and Cedar Street. Sam?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. In front of the governing body today is a request to install stop signs at the intersection of Second Street and Cedar Street. Things that we look at when we investigate requests like this is traffic, or is accidents. So at this location, we've had two accidents in the last five years. Both of them were right angles. Everything that we do in engineering is trying to reduce those right angled accidents. So we did receive two of them in five years. When we looked at those traffic accidents, though, we could not see anything that really caused the problem because they came from the west, and there wasn't any sight vision problems. However, there could have been parked cars, but looking at the reports, we couldn't tell. And so then we also looked at the volume of traffic at that location. It is a low-volume road. The numbers show that it's a low-volume road. So then we started looking at other things to look if there was a need for stop signs. And on the east side of the road, we have the Community Congregation Church. They have a park on the east side of their community, and they planted trees along the curb, and they're starting to get to a point where they are a sight-distance problem. And at that church, there is a daycare at that church, so we do have children in the area. And so we looked at that as probably the bigger need for the installation of stop signs. So the Traffic Advisory unanimously voted to agree with the installation of the stop sign, and they passed that recommendation on to you. So your alternative is to install the stop signs or to deny the request. Stop signs are built into our budget, so we do have.
Since that, since roundabouts are not an option, just kidding. I move to approve the request to install stop signs for the east and westbound traffic at the intersection of Second Street and Cedar Street.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve stop sign installation, east and west traffic on Second Street, Cedar. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried.
Thank you for talking.
Thank you.
Sam, do you want to share your big roundabout news?
What's that?
We have one.
Where?
We have one?
Is it unintentional? Yeah, well, that would be exciting.
Technically, there is a roundabout being built in Garden City in a development, Chapel Heights, and our third phase is building a roundabout, so it's under construction. We're probably half the way through building it, so it's kind of exciting to see that built in Garden City, so.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Finally. Once one's there, I mean, we can just, let's get over the first one's the hardest one, and then we can do the rest.
Okay.
We're ready for the consent agenda. If there's, if neither of those items are going to be removed, the appropriate motion would be to approve consent agendas, item H1 and 2.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, item H1 and 2.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, items H1 and H2. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. All right. Commissioner report. Commissioner Enru, you're first.
This is good to go first today. I was just, I was excited. So thank you for everyone who, in our community, who came out and voted in the election. It's, it's an important process, and, I mean, you can see how each vote does matter and every vote does count. I want to say congratulations to Commissioner Cessna and Commissioner Dick for your reelection, and then also for Commissioners-elect Manny Ortiz and Deb Euler. We're excited about that. So that's gonna be an exciting time. The Star Bond, I know a lot of Commissioners were able to attend the grand opening, or the, I just lost it.
Groundbreaking.
Groundbreaking, goodness. Grand opening, maybe you'll, maybe you'll be here for that.
I don't think so.
So, and that was exciting to see. I did want to say thank you to, we were able to go to the Washington DC trip, and I think it was, it was, it was a really, it was a really great trip. You got a smaller contingency. We were able to really cover some issues that we thought were important. Immigration was something that was really listened to, I think, this time, and it's not been before. There was lots of things happening in Washington. Of course, they're kind of insulated from it all, so it was kind of, it was weird being there. It's not like being here and watching it all on TV. But I think it was an excellent, excellent visit. It was exciting to see the governor out yesterday. I was able to do it a roundtable with the mayor, and, you know, she really is coming out and wanting to listen. I think she does have some plans. Again, it's just really making sure that we stay in contact with our state legislators and also the governor and explain to what we need. I do want to say thank you to, the legislative dinner was incredible. The meal was fantastic. The presentation was really good. There's a lot of information, and the turnout was phenomenal, so it was, it was really a great event. I did read in the paper today Gary Fuller, who was, used to be mayor and commissioner, passed away. He is just an incredible man. His funeral is going to be at Cornerstone on Friday, I think, and I don't know the time, but he really shaped, at 2:00, he really shaped Garden City. And, you know, sometimes it's easy to forget the people who have been before us sitting in these chairs. And he's one of those people that we build upon, you know, we stand on the shoulders of. So he will be greatly missed. He was also an incredible musician, and I don't even know if he knew how to play. He didn't technically know how to, took lessons for piano playing, but, man, if you ever heard him, incredible. I do want to talk about Match Day coming up, December 3rd. You can give early, which is, I usually vote early, and anything early, because I have a tendency to forget or be late. So I don't want to do that, and so I want to make sure that, to remind you, December 3rd is Match Day. So if you're thinking about giving, this is a way to double your dollars for those organizations. I just want you to do that. Last thing is, is the mayor said that we owed him money, and so I want to, I want to publicly say I'm paying the mayor money for the art.
You're low short.
I know. I guess I heard 20, and he said, oh, no, that was 25. Of course, how they always change it once you get here, but. But, so I, you know, I do appreciate the mayor going to the banner auction. It's a great event, and I just, I wanted to make sure, and I'm not off to owe you coffee.
Thank you.
So, and then we'll be, we'll be square. And then finally, the thing is that Thanksgiving is next weekend. I'm gonna tell you, we have so much to be thankful for in Garden City. The city manager said, you know, I mean, it sounds like a cliche, but it's a great day to be in Garden City. You know, really, to live here in southwest Kansas and what we have as far as families, I just want to encourage you to enjoy your family. Overeat, this is the time to do it. You know, this is the time to do it, but really enjoy your family, and again, an opportunity to just say thank you to lots of people in our community.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cessna?
I'll just say ditto to all the comments Commissioner Enru just stated. It was nice to see the governor out in this part of the state of Kansas. It's nice that she does recognize that, you know, western Kansas does exist, and she does come out and listen to the constituents out here. Want to congratulate the Crystal Apple teachers for 2019. Mackenzie Johnson of Garden City High School, Paul Lappin of Garden City High School, and Sarah Weiss of Garden City High School. It's great to see those outstanding teachers, but all teachers do an outstanding job in educating our students every day. So please congratulate any and all teachers when you see them in our community. They have a tough job, and they're really educating our next generation of leaders and citizens for our community. Again, just have a safe Thanksgiving travels, if you are traveling. Eat in moderation. I'll say, I'll say it differently than my fellow commissioner.
Diet.
Yeah, okay. I did hear good comments about the fireworks display for the Veterans Day. A lot of good comments from a lot of citizens about that. They're, were really impressed with the fireworks display and really glad that we have something to kind of honor and showcase our veterans in that way. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Commissioner Dick?
I'd also like to mention the successful groundbreaking for the Sports of the World Complex. A good speeches all around by everybody. Glad that Governor Kelly could make it out. Also, a good speech by Secretary Tolan. It was, that was a good event. Also, yesterday, went down to liberal for the Ford Kansas KDOT meeting, about the 10-year, 25-year plan. I thought that went fairly well. A good, I think out of all the groups, everybody kind of, one of the focuses was 156, resurfacing shoulders and stuff like that, which is good, because there wasn't too much agreement on roads on a whole, but almost everybody said 156 needed, which is, which is, I mean, impressive that everybody could agree on it, but also impressive a different way where people from Dodge and Liberal are saying, oh, yeah, that road needs to get fixed, because, I mean, by the nature, people want to advocate for the local projects. to get fixed, because, I mean, by the nature, people want to advocate for their local projects. But in general, it was a good meeting, talking about improvements, adding passing lanes, dividing highways and stuff like that, and I think the KDOT got the message and will take that back as they, as they formulate their plan going forward. Also was able to make it to the Governor Kelly's budget listening tour last night at the community college. That was really good, going over how the budget is formed and all that. Had some small group meetings, breakouts, and talked about what's going well, what's not going well, what some ways that Kansas can address that. Really, really good conversations. The governor participated in each of those small groups and kind of listened, so I think that was a really successful event last night. And then finally, to weigh in on the eating during Thanksgiving, I am for the eat as much as you possibly can.
Or you die.
This is, this is the one, this is the one eating holiday. I mean, we, as Americans, eat every holiday, but this is the one designated for that specifically. So thank you.
Well, I don't know. Not much for me to say, no. I did appreciate the pre-meeting. I thought Ally did a good job of explaining the insurance program to us, and also Mike Muirhead and myself attended the league meeting over in Lakin, and that was pretty well-attended. They basically talked mainly about all their legislative issues and that type of thing. I also attended the governor's roundtable, and that was a good meeting. It lasted a little over an hour, and she was very receptive and I, to all of our ideas, and I gave her a twenty-twenty financial report, a couple of those, told her to read it on her short flight back to Topeka, and she, she took it with her.
Were you gonna give her a test afterward? Were you gonna email her and say?
I just wanted her to see how we were spending our money and how we compared to other cities, our size, and so I thought she should have that, so I gave her a couple copies.
It's a great document.
So, other than that, we'll see you at the Christmas mayor's dinner, and we'll have a choice of entrees, and see when we sending that out, so. Anything else? Not stand approved? I mean, we'll adjourn.